How are you doing?
Good.
How are you doing? Pervito. Okay, good to see you. Where is Kevin Coganetti going? So sad. At least he, at least one of them is gone, but we're done. Oh geez, he's only, I said this. Logan said this. Why are you coming here? What is he, what's he gonna do? What's he doing? Thank you. Oh, I thought maybe he got, you know, just the, oh, no doubt. You're all, you're all safe.
Good evening all. Welcome to the June 11th Board Meeting. Uh, this is a great night tonight. We're gonna have, uh, Honors Night tonight. We're gonna have Honorees tonight. It's gonna be a great night. A little long, but it's gonna be a great night. So I would ask everyone first to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The National Anthem will be stung by Brooks, Berryel, Talia Rosen, two of our members of the O- Oceanside High School Siphon- Siphonic Choir, Honors Choir, and Oceanside High School Swing Choir, Select Choir. After we do the National Anthem, we may stand for a quick moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask you please to remain standing for a moment for our troops, for our National County Police Department, our Oceanside Fire Department, first responders, and of course, our healthcare workers. Okay, if anyone could please be seated. So this is one of the few times that I'm, um, I'm so proud to get up. We have a student here named Dennis Yoshivaya. It took me, if some of you people remember, about 12 months to get his name correct. But Dennis was, so last year, the governor, uh, ordered or wanted every school board to have a member of the, um, Student Council at, present at all our board meetings to represent the students. And we started it, it's in effect this year, but we started it last year because, uh, that's the way we are. We think that something requires somebody that's doing a good job. We wanted to do, we wanted to recognize Dennis. So this year, uh, we have a plaque that we're gonna present to Dennis. Student Representative to the Board of Education. He's the first one that come through the school district, and that's important. In recognition for your dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to representing the student voice, your insight and contributions have been a valued part of the board's work and have strengthened the connection between students and district leadership. With sincere appreciation, the Oceanside Board of Education, this June 11th, 2025.
We have a few special scholarships that we have the honor of presenting here this evening. So, um, I would first like to ask student Brian Terrado to join me at the podium. So as Brian joins me at the podium, let me explain that our Board of Education made a conscious decision to be a part of a professional organization known as Scope. It is well-known on Long Island as an organization that supports learning for educators, teachers, and board members alike. One of the things that we are able to do based on our membership is, uh, for Scope, to, uh, allow us to, allow the Board of Education to select one student to receive a $500 scholarship on their behalf. So it is my pleasure to let you know about Brian, a dedicated student and athlete who exemplifies exceptional character and resilience. His positive attitude and friendly nature inspire those around him, including his peers, teachers, and teammates who admire his tenacity and kindness. Remarkably, Brian balances academic responsibilities with extracurricular commitments, excelling both in his studies and as a valued member of the OHS Boys Varsity Soccer Team. His commendable time management and organizational skills shine through in those pursuits. Despite facing significant challenges this year, Brian's unwavering determination and grace under pressure highlight his ability to adapt and persevere. He has maintained his academic standing and commitment to his teammates during emotionally trying times, highlighting his courage and resilience. As he prepares to major in accounting, we'll have a job for you in a couple of years, okay? And play soccer at Nazareth University this fall, it is clear that Brian possesses the qualities that will make him an exceptional young man on campus. So on behalf of our Board of Education, it is my pleasure to present Brian with this $500 scholarship. Justin, are you here? I am extremely excited to share with the board and the community. Um, do you want me to read about the students? So you may have heard us speak now for the last couple of years that we engaged in an Energy Performance Contract, and actually gonna be talking a little bit about it later this evening. But, uh, we've been very, very pleased with the work that has, um, been happening with that. Uh, you might have noticed, uh, all our rooms in our buildings have LED lights, we have solar panels, uh, and so many other amazed, uh, amazing improvements that have also saved us a significant amount of money if you listen to any of our, uh, recent budget presentations. But one of the things I was so impressed with, with the company Energier, was that they, um, made a connection to students. So we've had representatives come into our classrooms and to talk to students, to give them real-life experiences, and so on. So one of the other things that they do is present scholarships to special students that they allow us to select, but that represent the goals and aspirations of both Energier as well as the school district. So it is my pleasure to begin with this student. She has set the bar exceptionally high in all aspects of her academic and personal event endeavors. Her combination of academic excellence, relentless work ethic, phenomenal talents, and genuine kindness make her a remarkable student. By the way, this is Justa Benoit, who is from Energier. Samantha has demonstrated profound commitment to her education, consistently achieving an impressive GPA while managing a rigorous course load. Her academic achievements extend beyond the classroom. She's engaged in significant research at Hofstra University and Lehman College. At Lehman College, her research on heavy metals and microplastics in marine biology earned her first place at the National Marine Educators Association and the Long Island Youth Summit. Additionally, Samantha independently studied the effect of hyaluronic acid on the growth of brassica rapa, showcasing her exceptional capacity for self-directed learning and research. This fall, Samantha will be studying biology at SUNY Binghamton and will be part of the first-year Research Immersion Program and the Scholar Program there. So, uh, I do now want to congratulate and ask Samantha Friedman to join me at the podium. Where's Samantha? Do you wanna say anything or do you want me to just do it? Samantha's not here? Anyone wanna accept the check on her behalf? We will make sure that Samantha, the check is for $1,250. Well deserved. Is Jamie here? Jamie Minchak? Jamie? No? Okay. Well, Jamie Minchak is an exceptional student whose passion for learning, strong character, and intrinsic motivation have made a lasting impression on our school community. She has consistently challenged herself both in and outside of the classroom. She demonstrates leadership, dedication, and compassion. Clearly, she deserves this well-deserved honor and recognition. She will be attending Rensselaer Polytech Institute to study Civil Engineering and Business Administration, and she too will receive a check for $1,250. We will make sure that they get those well-deserved awards, and I certainly want to thank, uh, Mr. Benoit and Energier for their generous, uh, recognition of the achievements of our students. Thank you. I know this is a busy time of year for all of our students. And now we move on to the honors portion of our evening. We are always pleased to welcome parents, students, staff, and members of the community to the honors ceremony portion of our Board of Education meeting. When we call students eventually, please come to the stage. When you hear your name, I will be on the stage, ready to hand you your medal. No money, I'm sorry, just medals. But they're really, really nice medals, I promise you. But we're going to begin tonight's honors, uh, in a, um, in a slightly different way, and this will be a little bit of a surprise to our board. But, um, I've spoken many times over about how our Board of Education not just attends monthly meetings. That would be way too easy. Uh, but in addition to that, they are consistently engaging in their own level of professional development, and they also belong to a professional organization called the New York State School Boards Association. And this year in particular, this is the most we've ever had, we have four board members who are being recognized for NISBA. I'm going to call them up here to receive their certificate and their just due rec- recognition. I'm going to start with someone who has received the Board Achievement Award, Level 1. There are all different levels for this, um, but this is for Ms. Laura Leacy. Recu- being recognized for a Level 3 Board Mastery, Mr. Stuart Kaplan. We have two board members who are receiving Board Lifetime Achievement Awards. Starting with, and by the way, this means that they have achieved what they call points, over 500 points for ongoing association PD and for accepting additional leadership roles. This really is a true, true commitment. The first Board Lifetime Achievement goes to Ms. Sandy Shoal. Most boards would typically only have one member to receive a Lifetime Achievement Award. We have two. The second one goes to Mr. Seth Blau. Thank you, and again, thank you so much, our school board trustees who give so much of their time so selflessly. Thank you. We have two other individuals to recognize for professional recognition. One is for Misty, Mr. Ed Reisner. Unfortunately, he could not be here with us this evening, but it was worth recognizing him because he has received the Educational Leadership Award for Outstanding Leadership, Scholarship, and Compassion from the Graduate Leadership Program at LIU, where he recently completed his studies toward receiving administrative certification. He's coaching his son's Little League team's game, otherwise he would be here tonight, but I know this is a big achievement, a big recognition as well for Oceanside, and we all congratulate him. The second professional recognition award goes to our very own Ms. Diane Previto. For anyone who knows Ms. Previto, knows that she is beyond amazing in her role. She's had many in this district, teacher, principal, and fortunately for me, over six years now as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Technology, where her work is just beyond stellar. She was recently recognized by NASA Bosse's as an Education Partner. This award is given to educators who exemplify the dedication to providing all children with an excellent education. Ms. Previto is a tireless advocate for students and for giving families the information and support they need to foster their children's education. It is my personal pride and joy to congratulate Diane, thank her for all that she does for this community. This is a well-deserved recognition, and she gets a medal. Our next presenter? Our next presenter is Dr. Brendan Mitchell.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Mitchell, the Principal of Oceanside High School, and I'm proud to introduce our first student honorees who have earned the highest rank in their respective scouting organizations. Liam Joseph Moreno, who has achieved the rank of Eagle in Boy Scouts, created a Hall of Heroes at School Number 5, his elementary school, that recognizes members of the military, and in particular Lieutenant Ronald Winchester, who attended School 5 and gave his life for our country. In addition, Liam, who is a musician, built new stands for musical instruments in the auditorium. Liam Joseph Moreno. Our next two, Amreese Rivera and Katie Swansig. They have both achieved the Gold Award in Girl Scouts. Amreese's Gold Project was a campaign to raise awareness and understanding of American sign language and to foster inclusivity. She created educational brochures, a website, a YouTube channel, a booth at a summer festival, and worked with children in East Rockaway and Oceanside. Katie held a theater rally at the Oceanside Library for children in grades 1 through 4. It included theater games, crafts, and a song and dance performance to introduce children to the joys of theater. Congratulations to Liam, Amreese, and Katie for being outstanding students and scouts. Scout leaders, if you are here, please join us on stage. Now in the area of mathematics, our Director of Mathematics, Tara Maurer, couldn't be here tonight, but I am so proud to announce the following honors in her place. First, in the American Mathematics Competition from OHS, third place Cassidy Cucho and Catherine Isabella Martin. Their teachers are James Smith and Rosio Sabarito. Second place, Richard Wang. His teachers are James Smith and Rosio Sabarito. And first place from OHS in the American Mathematics Competition, Ellis Chu. Her teachers are James Smith and Yves Jean Pierre. From OMS in the American Mathematics Competition, third place Maya Curtis and Ri- Ryan Mayer. Their teachers are Jenna Holzer and John Heron. Second place, Ariel Legrand, Ashley Wallace, and Kayden Brown. Their teachers are Dan Art and Jared Stoller. And in first place in the American Mathematics Competition from OMS, Antonia Verdino. Her teacher is John Heron. And continuing with mathematics, the Hackathon. Congratulations to our OMS Hackathon Team members, who were our district's first participants in a computer coding competition known as Hackathon. First place for digital banner submission, and please hold your applause till I read all their names. Peter Azkana, Joshua Benson, Misha Bouyan, Austin Candela, Jared Fernandez, Liam Brown, James Ryan, and Henry Whitman. Their teacher is John Heron. Please come up to the stage, our Hackathon Team from OMS. Our next winner in mathematics is from the Pi Contest at OMS. Congratulations to Henry Whitman of OMS. Please come up to the stage, Henry, if you're here. Henry won the OMS School Pi Contest by memorizing an incredible 236 digits of the irrational number Pi. Pi, which is often written out as 3.14, is an infinite number with no repeating pattern, which makes, which makes it extremely challenging to memorize. 236 digits for Henry Whitman. Congratulations. And from the Math Olympiads, the Silver Pin Award, top 10% worldwide. Our final honoree in mathematics is from School Number 4. He has earned the Silver Pin Award in Mathletes, which puts him in the top 10% of Mathletes worldwide. Congratulations to Brayden Hickey. Brayden's mathematics and Mathletes Advisor is Susan Bruno. Brayden's mathematics and Mathletes Advisor is Susan Bruno. Congratulations again to our math honorees. Our next presenter is Andrew Frey Gould.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Frey Gould, Director of Media, Fine, and Performing Arts. There's an extra letter, I'm used to it. I am pleased to announce that for the third consecutive year, students in our media production program under the direction of their teacher, Tracy Busk, have won a Telly Award. The Tellys are an international organization recognizing filmmaking talent across a variety of genres and platforms. Telly Awards are given to professionals in the fields of film, media production, and advertising, as well as students. They receive 12,000 entries each year, and the judges are industry professionals. Our bronze award-winning filmmakers in Ms. Busk's broadcasting course were selected for their Halloween-themed Sailor Station broadcast. Congratulations to Juliet Arfin, Joseph Braggy, Dylan Comano, Julia Herskowitz, Matthew Koppel, Sophia Lukavenko, Justin Manus, and Bella Usifery. Next, congratulations to our Oceanside High School winners in the Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. First, with a silver key and an honorable mention, Juliana Yanados. And with two gold keys, a silver key and an honorable mention, Laine Rapaport. Their teacher is Nancy Nigro. I am pleased to introduce our next presenter, Dr. David Rose.
Good evening. Buonasera a tutti. I'm David Rose, Director of World Languages in E&amp;L, and I'm proud to announce the outstanding accomplishments of our students on the National World Language Exams. Let's begin with the National Italian Exam, l'esame nazionale italiano, at Oceanside High School. Let's start with the bronze awards. So I'll read all of the winners in that category, so if you could just hold your applause until the end of each category, that would be great. So we have three winners for the bronze tonight. Alexa Perry, Sophia Arata, and Leah Lanigan. Congratulations. Come on up. The silver award. Matthew Antonet, Samantha Galella, Gabriella Amenta, Camila Olmeda, and William Brooks, the silver winners. Two students took the gold. Matteo Giliberti and Caitlin Vivona. Let's go to the National Italian Exam winners at OMS, and we'll start with the bronze. Avery Holbert and Justin Romano. The silver goes to Leah Auletti. And we have several gold winners. Here we go. Anthony Balsan, Francesca Botero, Jared Fernandez, Rebecca Ritsi, Christopher Rivera, Gennaro Sirota, Lacy Wasenberg. Congratulations to our gold winners. Their teachers are Bridget Ann Thor, Dr. Angelo Musto, Erin Patel, Richard Jenna, and Suzanne Valeriano. If you're here, please come up. Okay, let's keep going. Here we go. The National French Exam at OHS. Let's begin with the bronze winners. Christian Carbonado and Mary Devine. And the silver goes to three individuals. Abigail Santiago, Sabrina Zendaki, and Isla Russell. One gold winner, Suana Masood. Congratulations. Moving on to OMS for the National French Exam, we will begin with the bronze. Anderson Marokin Lopez, Talitha Molina, Juliana Calabrese, Angelina Vora, and Isaac Ramos. And the gold award goes to Amelia Chu, Carlos Cifuentes Fernandez, Juan Rosero, and Francisco Valencia. Congratulations. Those were the National Spanish Exam winners at OHS. Okay. Continuing with the National Spanish Exam, we have the bronze award at OMS. We have lots of winners here. Here we go. Sebastian Edelman, Charlotte Barone, Yul Elvis de los Santos, Sophia Elias, Miranda Espinoza, Emma Gomez, Kylie Hickey, Antonio Latso, Mia Maestro, Isabella Matute, Joseph Montenegro Perez, Kalen Morales Robleto, Alaya Para, Cecilia Reyes, Viviana Pellerano, Chloe Velasquez, Lexi Weitzman, Melanie Murillo. The silver award, also lots of winners. Jonibel Adames Aracena, Eliana Berger, Julia Brew, Tabitha Brew, Emma Bernal, Cora McCarthy, Isabella Moncayo, Ava Rodriguez, Ruby Shaberman, Gabriella Sparassio, Amelia Stefanowski, Jessie Stromer, Alexis Mahler, Mason Helmsley, Madison Molite, Zane Ramen, Hannah Weiniger, Aiden Flannery, and Ariel Legrand. Those are our silver winners. And taking the gold, we have Adriana Abraham, Emily Cueva, Brianna Ducos, Lea Flores, Lucas Infante, Madison Maestro, and Santiago Uciferi. Their teachers are... Oh my goodness. Okay. We have two additions. Here we go. So... On the National French Exam at OMS, the bronze award goes to Matthew Moran. Congratulations, Matthew. And the platinum award goes to Daissa LaRoche. Congratulations. Their teachers are Elizabeth Levengood, Dr. Angelo Musto, Richard Jenna, Amy Brown Rand, Christina Castilla Lyson, Giselle Vargas, Janine Garcia, Kelly George, Nieve LaRoca, and Patricia Valeriano. If you're here, please join us, and we'll take a photo. Let's give all of our world language winners one last round of applause, as I conclude with you this evening. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Thomas Lieben, Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our winners. We came off a fantastic athletic season, or school year. We had over 70 all-county athletes, and we celebrated those athletes last week, both at our all-county ceremony and our varsity awards night. Student athletes, if you hear your name and you're in attendance, please come up to the stage and wait until we finish all of our athletes for our picture. We'll start with our all-county baseball players. We have Kyle Shore and Luke Varoa. Come on up. In cheer, we have an all-London member, Adriana Orletta. In football, we had all-London and all-state Andrew Dato, Ryan Kakariko, Shane Harmon, Dylan Bender, Dylan Tiveter, and Ryan Pender. In golf, we had an all-county honorable mention in Matthew Lee. Gymnastics, we had all-county Julia Blett, Anna Quinn, Emily Sullivan, Adriana Orletta, Bobby Thorne, Isabella Menino, and Sofia Loscalzo. Back to the spring season in lacrosse, we had all-county Dylan Bender and Cole Wynn on the boys' side. And on the girls' side, we had Kalen Harrington and Sidney Abbott. And all-county honorable mention Samantha Gemmo. In softball, we had all-county Riley Bush, Joanna Byrne, Carly Handelman, Maya Levy, and Christina Vlahakis. In track and field, we had a county champion in the 100-meter hurdles and all-county in the high jump, Alexa Kozakowsky. Alexa was also named our Female Athlete of the Year and will be competing in both events at the state championships on Friday. Addison Weiss will join her at the state championships, and she was a county champion in the 400-meter hurdles. Another county champion in the long jump was Nicholas Correntz. And all-county in shot put, Brianna Cinnamon. And all-county in the triple and the long jump, Riley Nolan. All-county in the 100-meter hurdles, Cassidy Poole. All-county in the 400-meter dash, Brandon Fustanio. All-county in the 800-meter run, Matthew Lotticina. All-county in the 4x800-meter relay was Kevin Fernandez, Tristan Cuevas, Matthew Lotticina, and Tyler DeSantis. And all-county in the 4x100-meter relay for track and field was also Nick Correntz, Christian Santos, Luke Strandberg, and Brandon Fustanio. Our spring coaches, Mike Pastilio and Tom Pallato for baseball, Sam Samantha Kelly Chabak for cheer. We have Rob Brown as our head coach for football, Ryan Lucas for golf. We have Dakota Esznez for gymnastics. We had Mike Santistabon, Tom Zeke, and Jason Karlock for boys' lacrosse, Ralph Montero, Tina Pumo, and Jackie Celio for the girls' lacrosse, Carlo Quagliata, and Alex Pallato for softball. And we have Mike Kelly, Mike Howley, Connor Gannin, and Gary Merker for track and field. If you are here, please come up.
So in conclusion, be resolved that a page for the minutes of this meeting be set aside to record their accomplishments, along with continued best wishes from success from this Board of Education, done at Oceanside, New York, this 11th day of June 2025. A round of applause for all our students. At this particular time, we're going to take a five- or 10-minute break, a five-minute break. You can have some cookies and some refreshments in the cafeteria, and we'll see you back.
you back.
Hey, what's going on?
Put that down, so I'll sit with you.
I'm sorry, but I don't care. I'm giving you a hug. This is with Jackie. She's a great mom.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's a free card. I think it's a free card.
And what do you?
Play the song.
Hi, congratulations.
I'm telling you.
Thank you, thank you.
Who are all these people who are still here?
I don't know. Oh, no, retirees. And retirees and the families.
Nope, he's not retiring.
Yeah, walk down through the canopy of the new city.
That's like where my brother was. That's home, like, Dixell.
Really good, really good.
So it'll be that three end.
It's an old car.
Oh my God.
Yeah, Michelle tell you about the parking issue with the meeting?
Limbrook Athletics Department had their annual dinner. So it's all the teams, all of them, not just the football. So they, they, they must have had brand new vehicles all day. No one's carpooling. So they, I don't mind them coming, but I, Uri Formes got random Mercedes. Somebody talk to his spot. Ready? Ready? Okay, lucky you didn't park in Stevens Park. That's where I parked. The Nats' spot. But, um, the circle with the handicap. There were seven cars there. A little, a fence and everything. I walked inside and I saw somebody who must have been helping run it. I said, you better get the people out of the way who don't fuck illegally. I just called the cops. Why would you do that? They're fucking illegally on the handicap area. So what, you expect them to park illegally? In a spot, illegally. Oh, the members here who had a meeting had to park across the street? It was all right. They walked in the door of the garden, ready. He wasn't there. No, he wasn't there. The rabbi, I had it open. And the rabbi said, but you're going to close that, right? Like, why, you're nervous? Are you kidding me? Yeah, when a random Tuesday night, I'm going to go, you know, bother them. I know. So let me say hello to Gavin.
I mean, it's such my life.
We'll be starting in thirty seconds. We get everybody to sit down, please? Not Eric. All right, welcome back, everybody, to the full business meeting. We're on four F, as in Frank. This is the part where we go to our high school student government. And our representative, of course, is Dennis Ojovaya. Dennis, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. D'Ambrosio. For the last time, I would like to call up the following people. Myself, Sheri Armat, who is the vice president, Julianne Valionetta, who is our treasurer, and Dakota Calderon, who's our secretary. So, you all can hear me, right? Okay. We are, we first are very proud to announce from past events that our AP testing is finally over at OHS. You're all breathing a sigh of relief by now. That's exactly what we all said the second we finished our last AP. After two weeks of testing, these students may now be able to breathe a sigh of relief and finish the year strong with AP experience. So good luck to them all. On May ninth, our thespians held their induction ceremony. This musical genie, these musical geniuses have to go through high hoops to reach this point, and many of them have done so to reach the gold. So good luck, good job to them. Our spring concert was a wonderful success. We at the high school held two dates, one on May fourteenth and the other on May nineteenth. Our world language and math honor societies held their induction dates on May twentieth and twenty-first. It was great to see so many students be honored for their achievements in both fields. Also, on the twentieth, our thespians, along with the ace classes, held our annual Spotlight on the Stars event at the middle school. It was an absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing and a packed house show. We love to see this event every year and it brings such a joy to all who participated.
Continuing on, our music department held their annual TRIM inductions on the tour yet, and it was a great time for our music students getting honored. And now, last week was an absolute jam packed with all, like, seniors and students. So on June second, OHS started their awards week by hosting the art awards. It was a great way to honor thespians, artists, and musicians. Additionally, on June third, OHS had their Hall of Fame inductions for some special seniors, and later at seven PM was the varsity awards. We congratulate all of the athletes in OHS. Finally, June fifth was a great event for our seniors and community members as it was honor night. Our seniors received lots of scholarships and recognition, as well as our community members having a place to remember and honor their loved ones with memorial scholarships. We congratulate everyone who won and thank all the community members for what they've done for this school. On June fourth, our seniors had an absolute blast at Six Flags for a senior trip. It was a great bonding experience for everyone involved, and while the bus there was back, we're experiencing along, we still enjoyed it very much.
Our annual car show was held at the field on June eighth. It was a great experience for our engineering students. We have had lots of regents and fun events happening these past two days. While some students have been talking, taking some of the new regents given by the state, the juniors have been participating in workshops for the resume given by the guidance department, as well as seniors received their yearbooks and watched the senior slideshow on the tenth. And the eleventh today, they participate in the annual barbecue. We're also proud to announce that the new yearbooks created by the Spindrift staff, this year's edition is called Waves of Memories, and we had, we were beyond excited to be able to honor Miss Dilbert, Mr. Dilbert in our dedication page. We love him. OHS will be hosting their annual science synopsis in the cafeteria tomorrow, June twelfth. It should be a great day for all people who are fascinated by all things of science. Our thespians are gearing up for their thespian banquet, which is going to be held on June thirteenth. It should be a great event for seniors and to congratulate them on all their hard work.
Sadly, it is also shocking and bittersweet to announce that we will be having our last day of classes in school on June sixteenth. After this year of hard work and dedication, students can now finally relax and enter summer, who's excited. However, before they fully start to enjoy the summer, they must finish their regents and finals being given from June seventeenth to June twenty-fifth. Good luck to all on their finals. It's the last stretch, we can make it. It also is shocking to announce that our graduation will be held on Monday, June twenty-third. After four years of hard work, our seniors are finally going to get their diplomas and sail away from the harbor of Oceanside. And the seniors will, lastly, for one more time, reunite on June twenty-fifth for prom and Don DeLirium. It should be a wonderful event for all, even if most will be staying awake until four, four-thirty in the morning. I'm not excited for that. But on behalf of the 2024, 2025, Oceanside High School Student Government General Office, we are so grateful, general organization, I apologize, we are so grateful to have had the opportunity this year to speak at every board meeting and to give our part of the high school and just really have a blast. This opportunity was wonderful, and we would like to present the Board of Ed with a gift from us to show our appreciation. So we have flowers for all of you.
I'm speaking. Go. Why do you have the whole box? Now, while they're giving you your gifts, we're not done yet. So, yeah. We have, no more gifts, Mr. Mareska. That's all we could afford. So, it, like Julian said, it's, I still personally cannot believe that we are almost done with this year. It still feels like, it feels as though it was September, like it was yesterday, and we had our first presentations to these board, to this board. Now, it's the end of the year. During this time of year, luckily, came our student government elections, which were held on June fifth. And I am proud and honored to finally announce our future officers, and namely, our future general organization officers, who, when they hear the names, please come on down, will wave you and thank you. So, and wave to them, they need to see you. So, first and foremost, our incoming geo-president and second-ever student representative on the Board of Education, Brian Rolusco. Good, you waved. You practiced like I told you to. Our incoming geo-vice president, Matt Capel. That is not like how we practice. He will get an earful from me later. Our incoming geo-secretary, Macy Broner. Good. It's just Matt that didn't do it right. And our geo-treasurer, Jeremiah McDowell. As we can see here, these are about to be the future bright and shining stars of Oceanside. Treat them fairly, please. Well, before we end today, I just wanted to say a couple of words if I could. I'll be quick, I know it's a long night. I have been coming to these board meetings for the past two years now. I know, it's shocking. Every single time I do, Dakota. And I have been doing it as geo-secretary and geo-president and now as Board of Education member. It's just an honor that I will never, ever forget that was given to me to do this, to do these things. And first of all, to the board, I thank you all so very, very much for that. Now continuing, Dr. Mitchell. I thank you, I thank you so very much for all you've done for both this government, both of the students, and for myself personally. He's, I don't think he's here, but Mr. McKeel, no, he's not here, for all he's done with the student government, all he's done with shared decision-making team. And along with that, a couple of people in student activities... And along with that, a couple of people in student activities, one of which, if it was not for her, multiple times, mind you, I would personally not be here standing in front of you all. I would never have been in student government. I would have never done any of these things, and I would, even though she's at home right now, I'd really like to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Community Ella for everything that she's done to me. Along with that, Ms. Tanco, in student activities as well, Mr. Turk, who's been filling in for her, which I think we're all excited for her to come back. We love him, don't worry. Yeah, he's joking. And as well, Ms. Steinberg, in, who's our secretary in student activities. To everyone here, it has been my honor and privilege of a lifetime to speak in front of you all. To the future geo-officers, you have a lot of fun in front of you. Believe me when I tell you. To Brian, they're feisty. Get to know them. And that's really it for me. I'm shocked to say that it's over. And I think we were planning on doing this, got a little bit messed around. My name is Dennis Yoshevaya. I have been student government from freshman year to senior year. I am proud to leave this building as geo-president, student representative on the Board of Ed, first one ever, and now I'm luckily going to George Washington, to George Washington University.
My name is Sheri Ahmed. I've been in student government since my sophomore year, dragged in by Mr. Dennis Yoshevaya himself. Um, it has been a blast, and I'm ending off my high school career as the geo-vice president, proud to serve by my friends and my fellow student government members. And I'll be going off to Johns Hopkins University for biology.
Uh, I'm Dakota Calderon. Um, I was also dragged into this by Dennis. Um, he does that a lot, but it's okay, it's what makes him fun. Um, I've been in student government for two years already, and I can say that it is by far one of my favorite extracurriculars, and believe me, I have done a lot. Um, but yes, this year I am ending off as geo-secretary, and I will be going to Loyola University of Maryland, studying biology pre-med.
Hi, my name is Julianne Valionetta. I remember back in, uh, eighth grade, Dennis and I mutually agreed to join student government, and the circumstances of us joining both got foggy, but I'm so glad that we both stuck around for the long ride. I am ending off as geo-treasurer, and I will be attending University at Albany, studying chemistry for pre-med in the fall.
I, I actually forgot a couple of things, I'm sorry, it was all stuck in my head. I, I know, I'm gonna wrap it up in a second. Uh, to the whole board, especially a few of you, and I'm gonna name you in a second, Sandy. But thank you, Sandy especially, you took me on as your ment, as my ment, as my mentee, you're my mentor. And you made that wild mistake, and you lived with it. But it was a good mistake that you made, and I thank you for that. And to my geo-officers, I've made the closest of friends I ever could, and we, I told you this, Amtrak, you're gonna Amtrak me at GW, correct?
They'll be visiting.
They'll be visiting. I thank you all so very much, you are now relieved of your positions, and thank you all so very much.
So, I'll wrap it, don't worry, Dennis, okay, yeah, I know, I know you wanna finish, I know you're gonna get out of here. Um, I'm, just one last thing I wanna say. I, as you can tell from like our whole spiel about like our getting into student government, the common team was kind of Dennis. Dennis getting us into student government, kind of dragging us into it. And even though like at first it was like, oh, it's student government and all that, I definitely have become a very close friend of Dennis. Four years, I know. And I just really wanna thank Dennis. I feel like student government wouldn't have been the same without you. All the efforts, all the hours you put in, everything. I'm, I'll wrapping it up, okay? I just want, I just know that you deserve this, all this. And I'm honestly really proud to call you my friend, knowing you however long, and for even more years to come, I will be visiting you at GW, you'll be visiting me. I'll make sure to take all the Amtraks. And yeah, I'll definitely miss this school, I'll miss this district, but I'm just glad of all the friends I made and all the connections I made. So, yeah, thank you.
Get in, get in, get in. No questions.
Dennis, you wanna say anything else, Dennis? I mean, we've had the whole night here. You originally said, I know, you know, we're gonna let you just, you know, continue on afterwards if you want. After we're in the meeting, you can stay here with your friends and hang out.
I made a bet with Mareska, I have to win it, over under ten o'clock, I have to.
I hope Brian is, I hope the new guy, Brian, is gonna be a little less than you. God, let's continue on, Dennis, we, uh, we have the, um,
OMS student representatives. So, I'm honored to introduce the OMS student representatives, who are Zoe Saint Germain, Juliana Repetto, Aaliyah Castillo, Shay Gatto, Zayna Alberhi, and Quinn Brier, accompanied by Dr. Glickman Rogers.
All right, my name is Shay Gatto, and I'm a part of the Sources of Strength, uh, like, community from OMS.
My name is Zain Alba Harry, and I'm a part of the Sources of Strength community of eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Quinn Brier. I am a member of the Sources of Strength community for the eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Julia Repetto. I am part of the Sources of Strength of seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Aaliyah Castillo, and I'm a part of the Sources of Strength community for seventh grade.
So, Sources of Strength is a program where we, we are all proud to be a part of. We're trained, we were trained back in December through the Patrick O'Shea Foundation grant. Here, we learn skills about connection and, most importantly, the protective factors associated with suicide prevention.
Sources of Strength is a program dedicated to providing an upstream per, proactive approach to mental health instead of a reactive approach. Through the Sources Wheel, we help students identify strengths in their lives, including trusted adults, friendships, family relationships, physical activity, and spirituality. This year, we had the opportunity to meet as a group to come up with some important campaigns.
Our first campaign was helping each student identify a trusted adult in the building. During advisory, they wrote a note to their trusted adult as to why they valued them.
We then created a campaign for Mental Health Awareness Week. We kicked off the week with a live advisory, where we talked about stressors middle school students face and strategies we use to help us cope with these situations. We also set up tables in the lobby during lunch with different strategies and skills that we help students use. These strategies include deep breathing, box breathing, and mindful coloring.
We are so excited to have the opportunity to be a part of Sources of Strength and look forward to all the, of the support we can offer to our community in the future.
Um, before we end, a quick shout-out to the Patrick O'Shea Foundation for sponsoring us for Sources of Strength. The jersey I'm wearing is a Long Island, uh, Islanders, or New York Islanders jersey that was created from the fundraiser that they had, I believe, last Saturday. It's part of a raffle box won by my father in the back. Um, on it has the Ryan O'Shea, uh, Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation patches here and like on the shoulder. And then on the back, which I'll show you right after I say this, is nine-eight-eight-nine-eight-eight, which is Suicide Hotline Prevention, or Prevention Hotline. And it says, Talk Saves Lives. So, if you also wanna help out the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation, I recommend like looking into their events, cuz it's a really great foundation.
Thank you, OMS. Now, I would like to introduce the School Eight Student Council members, Emma DeLuca, Ben Werthermer, Ev- Evelina Sarkisian, and Jordana Brewer.
Hello, everyone, my name is Emma DeLuca, and I'm School Eight's president. The rest of the Student Council representatives, and I have done so much for our school this year, and I'm so proud to be a part of everything we've accomplished. But before we get into that, I would like to talk about the experience I had running for president. There were two votes to determine who will get the role. First, whoever wanted the role in the whole grade can put their name down into a doc, and the grade would vote from the list. I was so nervous to put my name down because there were so many people, at least fifteen. I was even close to not putting my name down and trying for one of the other roles. Two out of fifteen was pretty rare, but yet, I decided I really wanted that role, and I should take the chance. I was so thrilled that I had made it. Then, I realized I was up against my best friend. We were both perfect for pre, for president, and we were already in student council for fifth and sixth grade. I knew whoever got the role would do an amazing job supporting our school. But in the end, I was overjoyed to realize I had won. I couldn't wait to start. Since that day, we have done so much, like our school store, making special lunch menus, donations, and spirit weeks. I'll be focusing on spirit weeks. I love to go fill out and dress up. It is so much fun and really makes the week thrilling instead of having your typical school week. We have done all types of themes, like special colors, Wacky Wednesday, backwards, sport teams, pajamas, and much more. Sometimes, we even relate them to events that's happening. For example, for PARP Week, kids got to dress as their favorite book character one of the days. But none of this would have been possible without our amazing student council advisor, Ms. Sabrano. Thank you for making our school as great as it can be. We love you and Sabr, and we are so apprec, and we appreciate you so much, and we cannot believe this year is almost over. You're an awesome teacher, and whoever has you next year is so lucky. Now that you know about our spirit week and our fabulous teacher, please welcome Benjamin Wertheimer, our vice president, who will be talking about the lunch menu.
Wow, what a year. Hello, everyone, I am Benjamin Wertheimer, and I was one of the student council officers this year. This opportunity has been huge for me. Now, a few quick facts about me. I love all types of sports, and I love learning and engaging with new activities and, and people every day. Now, sit back, relax, and enjoy how I explain some of the key details of being a student council officer. This year, I decided to run for vice president. If you think about it, the president basically does the same responsibilities as VP. I've been helping out to make our school the best it can be. I've helped out with some major activities throughout the year, and I wanna shout out all my colleagues and friends for helping ma, helping with making School Eight great. This year, we collaborated to create a special lunch menu week for every student. It was during the middle of the March, and it was during the middle of March, and we loved it a lot. We had some brand-new food options, including Belgian waffles, dino nuggets, and more. We like to continue this tradition to future sixth graders. Everyone loved the new options. We even interviewed different students about the quality of the food. Lastly, I've over the year collected over two hundred-plus responses from students for food suggestions for the future years. This was such a big contribution to our school. Thanks for giving us these different opportunities to help out our school. I feel very accomplished in being a successful vice president this year. When I heard my name with a loudspeaker in November, I knew I would benefit our school. Love all my friends, and want to be, I want, I want everyone to be as happy as possible. Thank you, thank you for giving me strength, confidence, and bravery in standing up on bullying and other horrible things people do every day. We're also a very inclusive community, and I look forward to middle school to continue my amazing work in making everything positive and inclusive for everyone. Finally, I cannot forget my friends like our president, Emma DeLuca, and our secretary, Evelina Sarkisian, and our treasurer, Jordana Brewer. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to be this year's student council vice president. Good luck to the future members. Now, let's turn over our attention to Evelina at our amazing school store.
Hello, everybody, my name's Evelina Sarkisian, also known as School Eight Secretary. Getting Secretary was a very difficult role to get. It was like neck and neck for winning. I was also the one who ran. But when I heard my name with the last speaker for who won for Secretary, I was so excited because I was able to be part of student council with these amazing guys here tonight, and also because I was able to be part of changing our school for the years ahead. Some of the improvements were already listed, like the lunch menu and spirit week, but one thing that we haven't talked about yet is the school store. The school store is a great marketing opportunity, where we sold highlighters, erasers, bookmarks, folders, pencils, and more. We had our school store in the morning from when the doors opened around eight-oh-five to eight-twenty-five on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We held the school store from February to May, and people in the student council could help on it. Throughout the three months that we have held this store, we have raised one thousand dollars, which we invested in a utensil dispenser for our cafeteria. You may be thinking, a utensil dispenser, why? Well, we chose it because our current situation for holding utensils is bins where there's no plastic wrapper on the forks or spoons. You could probably imagine how that might look like, showing the utensils with first graders all the way to sixth. Not a pretty image. Um, I lost my straw. Imagine going to pick up a fork and seeing a little bit of food on it. Not a, it's like extra seasoning on your food that no one asked for. This is why we're gonna use the money to buy dispensers, so you don't get mishy supplies in the food you eat. Before I say goodbye, I'd also say, I'd also like to say that we should thank the student council, who, kids who dedicated their extra fifteen minutes of sleep to coming and helping run the school store and our amazing teachers, like Ms. Clea and Ms. Sabrano, especially for helping with ordering the items and help, and run, help running the school store. Now, let's turn our heads over to Jordana, School Eight treasurer.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jordana Brewer, and I am School Eight's treasurer. I know these speeches are long, but we are all talking about what the student council did for our school. I wanna tell you some thoughts about how it was being elected. In the beginning of the year, I wanted to be treasurer, and I always have. When I found out that sixth graders could run this year, I was so happy and filled out the form to be treasurer. Everyone, everyone who was running wrote a speech, and I figured mine was very good. And we said it on a stage, and so you can tell, here we are, and I made it as treasurer. It's a lot of, it's a lot of fun being a part of student council because we do many amazing things. Some places that we donated to were Lenda Paw, Oceanside Community Center, Down Syndrome Association, Toy Drive, Food Drive, and donated to the troops. We donate, we donate a lot of amazing supplies to these places that, to help them out. We try to help them as much as we can so that everyone feels good. We also have some things that have been talked about, like school store that we do, and the money goes to this, goes to the school to save up for other things. Thank you so much for coming here tonight, and I hope you enjoyed listening to our speeches. Have a good night.
How we doing there, Dennis, okay?
I'm fine for now. Anything else for me to say?
Right now, we'll, we'll catch up later on.
Yeah.
School Eight, good job over there, School Eight kids. Good job. And at this particular time, I'd like to call up Dr. Harrington for recognition of our retirees. I don't wanna say new retirees, just of all retirees. Dr. Harrington?
So, I like to say that this is one of my favorite, favorite evenings of the year, but the truth of the matter is, for me, it really is a bittersweet evening. In now twelve years, I've gotten to know so many of these individuals in so many ways, and, um, they've touched my heart, uh, because I know that each and every day they have just done an amazing job in the classroom and outside the classroom, as you'll hear in just a minute. And, um, I also always think that when we, um, when we lose such talent, it's something that we have to really take pause and, um, be reminded of what these individuals have given to us over the years. So, this year in Oceanside, we rallied around a common theme. Teamwork makes the dream work. We found inspiration in the great American pastime, baseball, where every player has a role. Every inning matters, and every victory is shared. Much like the game, our schools thrive because of individuals who step up to the plate day after day, season after season, with heart, dedication, and the unwavering commitment to do what's best for our students. Tonight, we honor a special group of team members. Our retirees, who have devoted not just years, but decades to our district. They have been our steady infielders, our strategic coaches, our outfielders watching the big picture, and our closers, who always found a way to finish. the big picture, and our closers, who always found a way to finish strong. They've shown up, rain or shine, given their all in every inning, and never lost sight of the greater goal, helping every child reach their full potential. Their leadership, compassion, and resilience have shaped the lives of countless students, colleagues, and families. Whether in classrooms, offices, hallways, buses, cafeterias, or behind the scenes, they've each played a vital part in making our team stronger. Oceanside is better because they were here. As they round third and head for home, we send them off with our deepest gratitude and admiration. May this next chapter be filled with the same joy, purpose, and love that they brought to our district. Thank you for your service, your spirit, and your heart. You will always be a part of the Oceanside family because once you're on this team, you're part of the dream forever. And now, I'd like to call each one individually and I ask you, please, to come up to the stage and just wait for a huge round of applause, as well as a wonderful picture we'd like to take. So I'm going to start with the people that I consider our unsung heroes. These are our hourly employees. And sometimes it's not always quantity, but it becomes quality. So the first person we'd like to recognize for retiring from a teacher aide position is Joan Doyle, who's been with the district for three years. Sort of the opposite extreme, someone who has given twenty-seven years as an amazing And now our civil service employees. I think anyone who knows anything about the running of schools know nothing happens without these individuals. Retiring, and I know Mr. Lehman is beyond himself about this, but after twenty years of service in our office of physical education, is Ms. Janet Marks. And I would like to thank Ms. Donagales, who is a representative of our OFT because we share this honor. After eleven years as a school four typist clerk, Ms. Kim Peckham. These next couple of people I get to know a little bit better because they've served in the district office for fifteen years as an account clerk, Ms. Anne Marie Leon. It was a beach day today, so guaranteed she was out on the beach all day. Fifteen years in our district office, Ms. Barbara Graham. And fifteen years at our school four central office, main office, Ms. Mary Ellen Callen. So school four has been wiped out if anybody notices, so we're really scrambling to find replacements for these amazing, amazing... And we know in an elementary school in particular, how important those main office individuals are. And now to our professional faculty. When you hear the amount of years that these individuals have served our children, it is really, truly quite remarkable. An E&amp;L teacher this year assigned to school two, but she's been in many different buildings in our district, Ms. Dominique Odde Martalucci, thirty years of service. After twenty-one years as a reading teacher, also in a number of districts, number of schools in our district, but most recently school four, Susan Commerford. Also school four, twenty-five years of service as an elementary classroom teacher, Ms. Karen Serving as a reading teacher, also in a number of different schools in our district, but most recently school eight, after eighteen years of service, Ms. Melissa Saletti. I'm going to call the next two up together because they really are two peas in a pod. They started together and they sort of made a pact they were going to end together. Thirty-seven years at school nine E, Ms. Eileen Benson and Ms. Jennifer White. Ms. White has also served as an active member on the OFT and I've so thoroughly enjoyed working with her in that role. But she's also been an OFT representative on the NISTERS, the Teachers Retirement System delegates board, representing the teachers, and I've had the pleasure of interacting with her with that as well. Thirty-seven years of serving as an elementary teacher. I don't know how we're going to replace that knowledge and just that professional guidance and expertise. They will be missed. Science teacher at our Oceanside High School after twenty-nine years of service, Mr. Evan After thirty-three years as an elementary school teacher at school number eight, Ms. One of our most amazing health teachers at Oceanside Middle School, twenty-seven years of service, Joseph Rizzola. And he's a picture of health, wouldn't you say? We have another science teacher retiring from OMS after twenty-six years of service, So this next individual, I just have to take a few special moments to say that when a new superintendent comes to a district, one of the things they get warned about is, oh, my goodness, you're going to have to deal with the union. And I heard the Oceanside Teachers Union is out of their minds. And the truth of the matter is, in a very short period of time, I learned that that was not anywhere near true and that I had the real pleasure of getting to know a number of people incredibly well in that period of time. So there is a special relationship you wind up having with the union representatives. At least, that's always been my philosophy and my approach. And I've always been very fortunate to have great relationships in my now over twenty years as a school superintendent. And it really is an important, important relationship and I'm so grateful to the OFT reps that currently serve. But this is an individual that taught me very early on what it was going to be like to be representing the Oceanside School community. He's also been an amazing, amazing English teacher at Oceanside High School. Thirty-six years of service and he and I really also have a very special bond because we are really, 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 really avid Mets fans. So it is my true honor to recognize, after thirty-six years, Mr. Frank Nappi. After twenty-five years of service as a physical education teacher, Mr. Robert Ravegna. At OHS, we are losing an amazing mathematics teacher after eighteen years of service to So I think I have one last person, but this happens to me all the time, people sneak up on me. So if by some chance I missed you, please, 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 call yourself out after I recognize this last person. So, I mentioned before relationships with the OFT. And to my surprise, I learned that our current OFT president was going to be retiring after thirty years of service to Oceanside Middle School, but really also to our entire school community as he wears the hat as president of our OFT. So we didn't miss anybody, right? Okay. So now, ladies and gentlemen, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to congratulate Oceanside
Dr. Harrington, do we have the amount of years? I'd like to say, can we add up those numbers?
Like right now on the spot? I don't know about that.
All right, how about Jill? How much?
Can you hold them up there just a minute? There are people taking pictures in the back.
Four hundred and two years on the stage.
Is that really?
Round of applause.
Thank you, Eric. Wow.
Again, congratulations to all the retirees. On a personal note, I want to thank my wife because now she can... For putting up with me, now she can do all the stuff around the house now that she wanted me to do. Now she can take care of all those things on the refrigerator.
She deserves a special congratulations.
Exactly. I will give them another minute or two. Okay, at this particular time, we're on four...
Jay.
Jay? And that's the policy review, the updating, the first reading. So, Mrs. Shoal, would you like to take care of that?
Yes, this is the first reading. And we have exactly five policies. One of them, 6106, was really reviewed and the only revision in it was we upped the petty cash amount from $25 to $50. That's the only change in that policy. The other four policies are all brand-new and they are based on brand-new legislation that was recently passed. And the policies are all there for you to see. I think the best thing to do now is just to take any questions the board members may have and we will direct those questions to Dr. Harrington. And if she wants to also speak with anyone else, have anybody else speak on them, I'm sure she'll call on them. So we'll start with policy now is going to be known as 1508. It's a new sexual harassment and grievances policy. Are there any questions on that from the board? All right, seeing no questions on that, anybody who needs to read them again can go on. on to our website and read those policy, read the policy. The next is something we already discussed tonight, and we saw it in live action, the ex-officio student member of the board. And we are adopting the policy from NISBA, and it will be in Section One under new number twelve oh eight. Any questions from the board on that?
Mrs. Shaw, the only thing I would add, if I may?
Sure.
Is that the board had an option of deciding how the representative would be chosen. And we made a conscious decision that it would be the student-elected member of the student, of the student government. And we think that that's the most appropriate way to select a candidate.
Okay. The next policy, which NISBA refers to as eighty-one thirteen, is now going to be our extreme heat condition days. And that is going to be Section Three, new policy number thirty-six oh nine. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead. This is Leacy.
So my question is, are we currently monitoring it just to get a baseline of what the temperatures look like, especially maybe in like the gyms during testing time?
We do. Our schools are now controlled under the EPC, which I'll get to next agenda item, with temperature controls that we can automate. So Mr. Montzmarano in our Facilities Department does have that based on school zones.
Perfect. Thank you.
Shut it off. All right. And the last one, which has been all over the airways and in the news, is the students and personal electronic devices policy from NISBA, which will be our new policy, Section Five, Fifty-One Twenty-Four. And at this time, board members, if you have any questions for Dr. Harrington. Seth, do you have any?
All right. Dr. Harrington, I see that the policy requires students to keep their devices in their lockers. Is that part of the state requirement? Or is the state requirement, they just can't use them?
The state requirement is they need to be in a storage facility of some sort. It becomes the local control as to how to identify what that means. After Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Glickman-Rogers, as well as the elementary principals, met with teachers and students, in fact, it was determined that the locker would be the primary and sole storage facility for the middle school, which they do currently this year, as well as the high school.
So if a person is just holding the phone and not doing anything else with it, at some point during the day, they would be violating the policy?
That is correct.
And I know the policy says that it will be chiefly enforced, I think by administrative staff. Who are the administrative staff in the school that would, the ones tasked with enforcing this?
It would be primarily, ultimately, the building principal is the chief, chief sole person. But of course, in our high school and our middle school, they have associate and assistant principals. They would be included as well. We also have deans at our high school. And in very, very productive conversations with the teachers, they also understand that while they're not, they will be not the ones to actually be the ones addressing the specific issue, they also going to be part and parcel of helping to model and set the expectations clear. But it is, it is the administrators that would be primarily responsible for enforcing the policy.
So, and what about like hall monitors, or security, or cafeteria staff, or anyone that may be in places where a student has it on their person and takes it out if they see that, or they're not to do anything?
No, they would, they would attempt to say to the student that they're, you know, violating the policy. And as you see, what the intention is then, is that the phone would be removed. And the hall monitors would have the authority to ask for the phone. And the student will have the responsibility to turn it over to them. And then ultimately, it will be, it will be then passed on to an administrator who will, as you can see from the policy, reach out in some way to the parent and ask the parent to come and pick up the device.
And as far as in the policy, there's a blanket spelled out, no suspension rule that's built into it?
Yes, that is correct. That is part of the legislation. We are not able to suspend any student for a violation of the actual cell phone policy. If there was a violation of our code of conduct, that's a different scenario. But for the cell phone policy, they cannot be suspended.
And similarly, the inclusion of the language about reviewing the statistically significant disparate enforcement impact, that's in the legislation also?
By September of twenty-six, so by September of twenty-six, we need to publish our data for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year of how many students, there were infractions of this policy. And we need to collect that data. And we do need to identify it, not by student identifiable data, but by demographic data. And I believe the intent, again, very specific in the legislation, but I believe the intent is to ensure that there would not be unfair or disproportionate accusation for students, perhaps, you know, diverse students, minority students.
You mean of just enforcing it against certain groups?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
And what is the, and how do they define statistically significant?
That is a very good question. It hasn't been more clearly defined than just that. So I can't answer that. But we look at data, as you know, whether it's absenteeism, whether it's grade reporting. So, you know, we don't have a number that we say is statistically significant. But you can, I'd say anything above twenty-five, thirty percent would be statistically significant. But that's me making that up somewhat arbitrarily. It has not been further defined in the legislation.
Okay. And I know in the, in the policy, there are certain exceptions that are listed in there. Are those exceptions that are built into the legislation? Or are those exceptions that?
The exceptions, the exceptions that are built into the legislation are, the ones that are listed here are the ones that are specific to what the law provides for. And of course, any student with an IEP or a 504 where this is identified as an area that would cause a student concern, we would be responsive to that. And if there's any significant medical need, we would be responsive to that as well.
But that's assuming, that would, I guess, assuming then the device could only be used consistent with the IEP or the medical condition. And so if a person has an IEP and they are permitted to use it for a certain situation, and then are seen walking in the halls, holding it, not consistent, they'd be violating the policy?
They, if they're not, if they're supposed to have it and they don't have it, are you saying?
If they're, if they have it and using, or holding it or using it in a way that's not consistent with the IEP, it would be a violation of the policy.
Yeah, yes. The IEP would have to be very specific in terms of when, how, and why it would be needed to be used.
Do we have any examples of why the device might be needed, either with the IEP or some of the other?
Yeah, I think there are a number of them. But the one that comes to mind is serious anxiety. Diabetes.
What about, and for the one for the care and well-being of a family member, that would be for a student that is caring for a family member?
Typically, I'm imagining that it would be possibly a high school student caring for a younger child. And that there would have to also be very specific rationale as to why they would need access to the phone on a, you know, on a consistent basis.
Okay. And then, of course, there's sort of the catch-all that's in there, that it could be permitted for other specific purposes. Like, what other types of examples that could be deemed as exceptions?
I think similar to other situations we have in our school, that there are times when parents work with their pediatrician or doctor who they feel, and they get medical input. And we get medical directives that, for whatever reason, a physician would say it's absolutely required. So do I anticipate that that might occur? I do.
The doctor would say that the phone is, or the medical, the personal device is required because of a medical condition?
Correct. Correct. And I'm imagining anxiety will be the number one reason for that.
How are they used for anxiety?
To reduce anxiety.
Yeah, but how? Just holding it or like using it?
No, not having, not having the access as they're really currently used to. Would cause potential anxiety. That's what I imagine I could see a medical practitioner saying, especially at a parent's request.
So then, would the student then be allowed to use the device or access the device, or just hold it or possess it?
That would, the specifics of how it needed to be used would have to be outlined in the request. And then each request would have to be reviewed specifically by the building administration.
Okay. And then going back to sort of the initial piece about students keeping them in their lockers, what were some of the other options that were considered?
Backpacks.
And I know in the high school, a lot of students generally don't use lockers.
They will next year. You're right. But this was a significant conversation at the high school. And it-
Right. So why that over then?
Because, because if you follow the research, and this is, this law was really built on that. And let me be clear, we don't expect that this is going to be seamless in terms of enforcing it, especially going into next year. We're prepared for that. But we know it is the right thing. And over time, similar to the way we had to teach our kids the importance of wearing the IDs, we expect it will become part of the culture. We do expect there will be challenges in the early part of the year. That being said, part of the research is that having even your device as close as your backpack, which would ultimately be, you know, on your person, if you will, is, is more anxiety provoking than if it was learned to be in a completely separate location from where you physically are. Now, I will be clear, we don't intend at the high school to search backpacks. We're not going to stop and frisk. We're going to, you know, trust that our students will certainly ultimately learn, you know, why this is so important, and be able to follow the practice of coming into the building, going to a locker, putting the phone away, even if they, they can still carry backpacks, let me be clear. But the phone cannot be in their backpack. We've been doing that this year at our middle school, and it's working successfully. And I can really understand, for our ninth graders, it's going to be no different than what they're used to this year. I really see for our upperclassmen, particularly our eleventh and twelfth graders, I recognize the challenge that it's going to be. We're talking as adults about how we're going to have to be good role models for that. And we're trying to build up our own ability to do just that. We all have become so used to having this device, you know, at our fingertips. So this is going to be a learning, a learning journey for all of us. But it is with merit and for very good reason.
So that raised an interesting point that I hadn't thought about. This applies also to staff?
We're not telling staff they have to put their phones in a locker. But we are going to ask them to be, to be good role models and not use their phone in inappropriate times. You know, teachers have different schedules, and, you know, they have different responsibilities throughout the day. But we do expect that. And I don't, I don't anticipate any problem with our teachers helping us. And quite honestly, it's good for them, too. It's good for all of us.
Okay. And are there, are there issues with lockers being broken into? And a concern that if everyone's going to know that there are devices in the lockers, that could?
That has never been something that has been brought to my attention. And it's never been, you know, vocalized as a worry moving forward with that being the plan.
Never been brought to your attention, meaning no one's ever asked about it or suggested it, or it's?
I think that if there was a significant issue with thefts of lockers, that we would know about it.
Now, we're talking about it going into next year. If everyone's going to know that there are devices that are kept in the lockers, then that's also a little different than not knowing what may or may not be kept in lockers.
I guess-
Or a lot of students not having a locker at all, which, if they're all going to have a locker next year, and some may have a locker just to have the phone in.
I would say, honestly, I believe most will probably use, initially especially, use their locker primarily to store their phone. But I think it's a valid point. Obviously, we'll monitor it. I have a lot of faith in our, in our kids. Our kids are great. And I just don't, I just don't anticipate that as a problem.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. For me, there's a lot here to think about.
Yeah, I mean, ninety, ninety percent of this policy was drafted, as you know, as a model from the NISBA policy, directly coming from the law. The few places where we had some liberty, as I said, was where the storage was going to be. And, you know, identifying both internet-abled and non-internet-abled, internet-abled devices that are still electronic devices.
So this like includes watches? Some people take the watches off? Okay. Thank you.
I have two quick questions. Sorry. No, quick. I noticed in there it said that parents will be able to communicate via email with the students. Currently, it's locked out from outside district emails. That's going to obviously be adjusted for next year?
We're aware that that's, how do we, Brendan, do you remember where we dealt with that with the email? I'm trying to remember. We went back and forth on that one. Yes. But we're hoping that parents will primarily use the old-fashioned way of calling the office.
My other question, quickly, it doesn't address-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I just remember one other thing we realized, that a parent, if they really need, if they can't use the telephone to reach, they can send an email to a staff member, to the counselor, to the principal, you know, not that they're checking their email twenty-four seven, but that is another way they can email the school secretary. And they will all get very specific information on how they can access and what emails would be more likely to be used. So that's just another alternative. That's what I wanted to remember.
All right. And just the last question quickly is, I noticed it didn't address field trips, or at least I didn't see it in here. What is, do we want to add language for that?
Field trips are off of school grounds. I mean, I think at this point, we're not going to touch that. And just, let's see where that takes us.
Okay. Thank you.
Included in the legislation, field trips. So no reason to touch what's not there. That's it?
Dennis, is that okay, Dennis? Or just, okay. So I was just wondering, Mrs. Shaw or Dr. Harrington, is this a complete state pack, state policy? Or we got a state policy, and then we decided to edit that policy, which, which good for our students?
We made a decision relative to what we were going to determine was storage. And we decided that at the high school level, it was going to be the lockers. Middle school level would be the lockers. Elementary school, it would be the cubbies. They have different places in different elementary schools. So that we made the decision on. And we clarified both internet-enabled and non-internet-enabled devices that are electronic devices. And we included that in our policy as well. Those are the only things that we modified. The school day is defined by the law. School grounds are defined by the law. The method to contact the parents defined by the law. The, which, which students may be authorized to use different devices by the law. Students with IEPs or 504s by the law. And then the other pieces about having the info on our website, communicating with the parents, is all in the law. And the suspension of students, also in the law.
So we can say basically, across New York State, in all public schools, they are doing a similar policy to this, except for just a few different items, correct?
I can only speak for the fact that this is the law. And what individual school districts do, I can't speak to that.
Is there, do we know if there's any pilot programs that's available, or we're just going right into- going right into this whole policy?
We're going to follow the law.
Okay. And the other thing was that, are we going to be having meetings with our students and our student councils as far as when we call it policies, our specific policies? And I guess we'll start off just by trying to educate our students.
Doctor Mitchell is-
And I'm looking at Doctor Mitchell.
No, yes, because he's already begun that. Can you explain, Doctor Mitchell?
Yeah, I'm just saying is that, and Dr. Harrington brought up as far as anxiety, whatever it is, and I'd like to see possibly that we can maybe start educating like IDs and stuff like that, giving out handouts and making sure that we keep, keep reiterating to our students exactly what we're trying to do, you know, rather than, you know, push this law down their throat, that, that we are getting pushed down our throat in this particular incident, incident. In other words, say that-
I would-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I just want to remind the board that we started a year ago when we determined the goals for this year, that we would, we would focus on the use of social media, and we did that very effectively through Parent University. We had many, many different platforms where we heard from parents, and we had parents who were very, very concerned, especially the parents of our younger children, as to where they were going to go. That was before the law even became the law, to be honest, you know, to be honest with you. So we were ahead of the curve in terms of having those dialogues. We continue to do that, and one of the things that we spend a lot of time and attention on is the impact of social media, because I think, as we all know, it has had a huge negative impact on, on our young people.
I was very fortunate when I took a tour, Mr. Kaplan, to the high school, and we saw we had these cubbies that were on the doors. So the kids came into the classroom, and I think also Castleton, where the kids came in and they put their phone on the door, like on that cubby, when we were kids, it was shoe racks. And I guess the kids saw their phone, or they knew a phone was there mentally, and they knew that at the end of class, they were able to pick it up. So I mean, I hope that under that type of style, that they were starting to get away from their phones. But we're going to come off a summer of kids holding their phones, holding their phones, holding their phones, and next thing you know, we walk in the first day, that we're going to try to start to ease them out of that phone and try to educate them more than, than anything else. Yep. And in September, we'll spell out that, like the do's and the don'ts that you can't do and, and- I know, but I'm just saying that after we do that, but sometimes kids have a lax, you know, lack of, lack of memory, and I'm sure the middle school kids, they're going to come in also, and, you know, they come off a summer and all excited and, you know, beach, and next thing you know, we're, you know, we're trying to grab their attention, and as we know, the first week or the first couple of days, you know, we've got to try to saddle them down. Doctor Lickman Rogers, did you want to say anything?
No, I think it's going to have a big change in the middle school. The policy right now is that their phones should be off and away, they're locked today. So we'll be enforcing that next year, the same way we do this year. This year, we're currently giving them a couple of warnings before a parent has to pick it up. The difference next year is if your phone is not locked and away, they're locked today and we see it, people would go right to the office and your parent would have to pick it up. The only thing I would note is that students are always, always welcome to use their phone and other ways. Every student has a right to come to office, do you have to be located within their team sectors? They're all often to use that phone at any time, they can use it anytime, Kansas. So the idea of having to have the phone for anxiety is actually what we're trying to address, having the phone to work with anxiety. So we want them to be able to attach and put that phone away and know that they can always use the phone if they need it. And hopefully, the parents will recognize that, and that's what I was going to say, is exactly what we're trying to address. Why do you have to be frightened of that? Why do you have to, you know, importantly, to hand something in? That's what's the pattern we're trying to break. So we'll work with parents to address that, and we will help to ease anyone's anxiety without having their phone on their, on one of these.
Well, also, the fact is that sometimes we have students texting their parents to say that, hey, Mom, there's a police car in front of the building. Not that we have a police car there because they're just doing safety checks, they're not there for nothing else. If an ambulance shows up, it could be anybody that's going on, but then the social media frenzy starts, and that's how the whole thing starts, when we start getting misinformation out there. So we can also maybe try to work on that too a little better on, I guess, just trying to calm our friends down. Okay, I'm good on that. Mrs. Shaw?
Hey, I have a little, I have a question, if anything, and just have a couple of things to say. So I, we are actually excited to meet with Doctor Mitchell tomorrow about the whole policy. And to be quite honest, as a student government, we were incredibly terrified by this new policy. We had all assumed originally that the pouches, like those yonder pouches would come in. We were all wildly against it. Then the locker idea started to come more so ahead. We, we weren't fine with it because it was taking away our phones. We sat with it and we kind of realized, after a lot of us that were seniors had to tell them, like, this is how it's going to go, under, they finally understood, like, this is, this is the way of the plan, this is how it's all going to happen, and this was the easiest of policies of transition. Now, what I'm wondering is this, because in the middle school, you're doing very, very well on it. I even remember having put my phone away when I went before COVID. These students had COVID, which in many senses kind of like gave lax to them, and it wasn't on any of our faults. We had it shut down, and that kind of lax continued. We have three grades that are coming, like, becoming higher-ups who do not remember anything of this. Maybe the ninth graders had something of this in the middle school, but primarily the 11th graders, especially of the 10th graders, are stuck with this now, and we have heard massive complaints from them. Is, this is sounding as though to us, at the very least, it's being pushed. And I know at the very same time, we are trying to put info on them, trying to tell them, like, this is how it's going to go and everything, but to many kids, it exactly sounds like it's going to be pushed and they have no way out of it.
Well, that's typically the way law works.
I know. And, and we were understanding of it, we were fine with it.
No, I, so you make a very valid point, Dennis, and, and I've said that, you know, and when this was first being discussed all year long, so we knew this was potentially going to happen, I, I actually really was surprised that ultimately the legislation took such a hard line on it. I really did think that initially they would leave it more to local control. But I have to say that the more, even in the last number of months, the more that you look at the research and you realize that almost, you know, what you're describing is sort of like a cold turkey for, for some of these, these people and stop, and we know that's going to be difficult. As I said to Mr. Blau earlier, we, we're not foolish about this. We recognize it, but at the same time, we really do think that, you know, in a relatively short period of time, people will not only get used to it, but will ultimately realize the benefit. So we'll monitor it, we'll work very closely, you know, the relationship that the school administration has with the students. We, we want to work together on it, but we, we will be following the law and, and at the end, you know, so it can be interpreted however you, you say, but we will be doing that and then supporting our students through this.
We, we have plans in place, especially, I just, I also wanted to make them know that, like, especially for those seniors, incoming seniors, that really do feel like they have cold turkey on this, there are plans in place to help them with those anxiety issues and everything, e- even for the students who do not want to, like, ever go to a trusted adult about any of these things, there are plans in place to help them. That's just what I want to make sure, right?
Yes. And, you know, one of the things that goes back to a question that Mr. Blau asked, so we could have taken a stronger position on extracurricular activities, or as Mrs. Shaw said before, field trips, but, but we chose not to go that route, and we're also an open campus. So once schools, once students leave the school grounds, they would be entitled to use their phone. We're certainly not going to, you know, track them down off the school grounds, and we recognize that that will be a transition, something we're going to have to monitor. But, you know, there is a little bit of that, that wiggle room there for some of the students. Many of our students, as you well know, leave campus for, for the lunch periods or their free periods.
Dennis, I want to thank you. I think you're going to defer to George Washington for one year, and you can stay back and help us with your cell phone policy?
I, as I wrote in my letter, you need anything, I'm one phone call away and an antre.
Okay, Mrs. Shaw?
She's done.
Okay, are you done, Mrs. Shaw? Okay. We're right now on 4K update on the Energy Performance Contract, EPC, Dr. Gerald Cokely?
Yes, just two quick updates regarding our Energy Performance Contract. We are in the final stages of nearing completion of all 11 energy conservation measures. Just a reminder for the community what that includes. That is steam trap upgrades, boiler burner controls, plug load controls, building weatherization improvements, mechanical insulation improvements, unit ventilator improvements in the older swings at schools three, four, and five, HVAC auditorium replacement at the high school, building automation, DDC temperature controls, LED lights, and solar panels. Construction began back in the winter of 2023 and again will be wrapped up over the next couple of weeks. There are a couple of outstanding punch list items, including occupancy sensors, as well as going fully online with the solar at the high school. Once completed, we do plan on having before and if, before and after pictures of each ECM on the district's website in the Buildings and Grounds section. The other important update is back when our EPC was, the contract was signed a couple of years ago, at that time, we were given an estimate of guaranteed savings that were projected by our energy savings company, which included rebates for steam traps, LED lighting, and projected savings through energy consumption through their proposed improvements. We are definitely seeing some of those savings as predicted, and our contractor that's leading the work, Energy Systems Group, and our partner, the project manager, Energia, we had the representative here tonight, they have been relentless with continuing to apply for additional rebates and incentives that stretch beyond what was initially proposed. To that end, Oceanside has recently been approved for a federally funded incentive under the Environmental Protective Agency that has to do with us installing solar panels on all of our schools under the Inflation Reduction Act. So right now for us on paper, it's approximately a million dollars, which is a great sign. Documents were signed on our behalf and filed accordingly. However, this incentive, like many others, is currently tied up with federal programs that are in flux about the funding commitment moving forward as it was under a previous administration. However, we are closely monitoring this development and hope to have, you know, some sort of further development or information moving forward. But just wanted to provide this update to the community that, you know, we are, again, relentlessly advocating for further incentives, but, you know, we are tied up with some federal government intervention with our EPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cokely. On 5A public input, opportunities to comment on agenda items. Any audience member wishing to make a comment on an item that is on tonight's agenda can do so at this time. Anyone wishing to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so later on in the agenda. While New York State law does not require us to hold a public comment period on agenda items, this Board of Education chose to do so because we believe it's important to get input from community members on the board's agenda items. Please note that the board is here, the board is here to listen. While everyone is encouraged to share their comments, please keep in mind that this is not designed to be a question and answer session. Again, comments should be directed towards the Chair of the meeting, which is me. Anyone who wishes to speak should come up to the microphone, clearly state your name and your child's school. Is there anybody that would like to come up? Only on agenda items. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve minutes for the May 7, 2025 meeting.
Motion. Second.
We got that, Justin? Yep. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of minutes of, approval of minutes for the May 20 meeting, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Sandy, Laura. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes. Acceptance of financial reports, treasury reports, transfer of funds, and internal claims and audits of warrants. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Robert?
Second.
Dawn? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval to accept a donation for School 2 made by School 2 PTA. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Stu and Seth? Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, School 2 PTA. Approval to accept a donation for School 6 made by a community member. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura? Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval to accept donation made by the School 6 PTA. I'll take a, a motion.
I move it.
Robert? Dawn?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, School 6 PTA. I'll take a motion to enter into the financial agreement with M&amp;T Bank for the 2025, 2026 year. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Stu and Seth? Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Justin, how we doing? Approval for use of facilities for the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation. I believe that came from School 8. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval for the, approval for the use of facilities as submitted. Use of facilities, East Rockaway Ocean Raiders for using the fields. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Robert?
Second.
Dawn? Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval for use of facilities for the Oceanside United Soccer Club. I'll take a motion.
Motion. Second.
Stu and Seth? All in favor?
Aye.
Any question or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I'm sorry. Approval of the use of facilities by the Oceanside Library. I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura? Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval for the use of facilities for sports that cheer. I'll take a motion.
I move it.
Robert? Dawn?
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. We're on 8A. I'll take a motion for professional personnel recommendations.
Motion.
Stu? Seth? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes.
Mrs. Dambrosia, if I may, so I, I would be remiss if I didn't just announce another bittersweet moment where the board has just accepted the resignation of Mr. Kevin Carbonetti. Those that know, Mr. Carbonetti, just know him to be a gentleman's gentleman, a, just an amazing guidance counselor. He started as a TA in 2009 in the guidance area, then became a counselor in 2011 through 2020, and then we were wise enough to bring him on board as our associate principal, primarily in charge of guidance since 2020. Kevin, for those that may not know this, traveled back and forth from New Jersey every single day. So as the father of four, he ultimately realized that he just really needed to be closer to his home. He was very, very sad about the concept of leaving Oceanside, but we basically said to him, he had no choice. We know he's going to have an amazing future in education. The upstate district is very, very happy to have him, lucky to have him. He's certainly a loss to us, but I will say we've started the process and we have some good prospects that we're interviewing now for the role of associate principal. And I know the board joins me in wishing Mr. Carbonetti nothing but the very best. Oh, and also, I'm so sorry, we just approved many, 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 many new teachers. So you can see that the HR department has been incredibly busy. I can't honestly tell who's here and who isn't. We'll have our opportunity in the early fall to recognize you specifically, but can I please, if you're, if you're a new now official sailor, could you please just stand to be recognized?
Now swap the decks.
Congratulations.
We're on?
B.
8B. I'll take a motion for civil service personnel recommendation.
Our motion.
Sandy?
Second.
Laura, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Dr. Harrington?
Nope.
Okay. I'll take a motion for hourly employee recommendation.
I'll move it.
Robert?
Second.
Dawn?
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Dr. Harrington?
Nope.
Okay. I'll take a motion for hourly employee recommendation.
I'll move it.
Robert?
Second.
Dawn?
Second.
Any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. Make a motion for reappointment of probationary personnel.
Our motion.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And we're on 8F for the 2425 co-curriculum new appointee appointments update, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Robert?
Second.
And Dawn, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. On 9A, we'll take a recommendation of a CSE, CPSC chairpersons.
Motion.
Stu?
Second.
And Seth, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And we're going to take a motion to approve and allow students to compete in the 2025, 2026 school year at School 4.
I'll make a motion.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Authorization to reaffirm district reserve accounts, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Robert and Dawn, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Authorization to reaffirm district reserve accounts, reaffirm, reaffirm district reserve counts. I'm on, I said it. Take a motion for bid awards.
10C.
Motion. Second.
Stu and Seth, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We're on D, proposal to add an addendum to the current contract between the Oceanside School District and the Teachers' Aid Chapter of the OFT, I'll take a motion.
Our motion.
Sandy?
I second.
And Laura, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Approval to destroy ballots, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
Bob?
Second.
Dawn, any question or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Opportunity now for the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. D'Ambrosio, just very, very briefly, I just cannot believe that this is actually the last board meeting of this school year. Please mark your calendars, July 2 will be our reorg meeting, starting the 2526 school year. I swear, I, it feels like yesterday that we were in the auditorium of Oceanside High School, starting what was, what was really, what really proved to be quite a wonderful school year. So our summers are chock full here in Oceanside between our amazing CARES camp program and our summer school program, and just the continue, the work just continues throughout, whether it's curriculum writing or professional development. We look forward to it, but at the same time, no one can deny that the summer is an opportunity to relax a bit and most importantly, to spend some well-deserved time with family and friends. So I use this opportunity to thank you all for an amazing school year and wish you nothing but the best of health and happiness for a wonderful summer and look forward to the 2526 school year. That concludes my report, Mr. D.
Okay. At this particular time, we have Board of Education report. I'd like to start off by saying that this year was a real challenging year. I mean, I think we had a lot of, a lot of things going on. We did a lot of good things. People have come down to our meetings, we recognize between the honors and the athletics, everything we're doing, you know, our high school principal, our Castleton principal, our middle school principal, all our elementary principals are all doing a great job. And as they finishing off the year and moving up ceremonies, and they're already looking for September, but I want to compliment between the administrators, our teachers, and our aides, the job that they do, they're doing a yeoman's job, especially the PTAs, on finalizing this year on all the different things that are going on, honoring staff, honoring administration, and then actually getting ready for September. Before we know it, summer's going to be over and we are, I know we're going to hit the ground running, the new cell phone policy, I know we're going to be ready for it, and we might hit a couple of bumps in the road, but I'm sure we're going to overcome it extremely well. And there's just a real good sense in the air that everyone in this district is working hard, and I personally like to thank everyone in this district that's making Oceanside the district that it is. With that being said, is there anyone else on the board that would like to say anything? Seth Blau?
So Dennis, you did point out earlier, tonight was your ultimate. It was your ultimate meeting as our representative, and I know you, are you the first ever student rep? Because I wasn't sure if you'd mentioned that. So you know, the school district went 125 years without a student representative until you came on. So when you say you're the first ever, you know exactly how many years that we were here as a union free school district without a student rep.
And I would just like to say, now I'm in the history books as the first ever, so 125 years.
That's right. That's right. So you're there. I just wanted to say that for Brian coming in, so what Brian doesn't realize, and you said you've been coming for two years, but the difference between last year and this year is last year you used to leave right after you did your announcements, and this year you had to stay for the entire meeting, even when it goes beyond 10 o'clock, right? But you did set the bar very high for our student representatives. So Brian's got a lot to live up to, as well as all the ones do in the future, and you know, I do think that as you mentioned, as you go on, you will look back on this experience. I think you'll find it very valuable, and hopefully you learned a thing or two over the course of time that you were here. But I do wish you the best of luck next year, and I know you're going on to do some great things in your future. So congratulations. One other thing I'd like to mention is this past weekend was the car show in, in the parking lot at Oceanside High School. So it's the fourth annual car show, and for anyone that hasn't gone, it's a real treat. It's amazing, it's amazing to see the work of our students of rebuilding the cars and putting them out there on display and seeing just what they learn. And I know next year, a little bit of the discussion was the challenge next year for the show because the construction will be going on, so they'll have to figure out an alternative for that. But there were probably over 300 cars there, and it was, it was, the rain held off, it was a beautiful day, and I, you know, strongly encourage everyone next year to make an effort to come out and take a look at that. That being said, the end of a great year, it's hard to believe that the year is over, and look forward to seeing everyone in July.
Any other board members? Dawn Maraska, is that it? Dawn?
Excuse me, uh, Mr. President? I'm on, right? Thank you.
You're on, Mr. Maraska.
Well, let me begin by saying I had the pleasure of attending School 2, 3, 4, and 9E beginner concerts. I congratulate the teachers for what they have accomplished with the third grade student orchestras and the fourth grade student bands. Great job, and also, it's astounding at how many students played in these beginner concerts, and they'll still be running some tomorrow, I believe, and one next week. I could be wrong. But you know, when you look at the beginning concerts, then you look at the next step up, the elementary concerts, which includes grades four, five, and six, and I had the pleasure of seeing School 2s, 3s, and 8s concerts, and they were terrific. Next, you came to Grade 8 concert, and then the two concerts at the high school, what wonderful performances on all levels. Congratulations to all the teachers and the students, and also to the director, Andrew Frygold, and his two assistants, Jennifer and Vicky. And of course, when you see the high school symphonic concert, you think they're on Broadway. Mr. Simmons, principal of Castleton High School, and his students and staff members had the raising of the veteran's flag ceremony held on schoolhouse screen. What a wonderful program. I also had the pleasure of attending three awards programs, and congratulations to a number of students receiving art awards, and congratulations to, again, Andrew Frygold, the director of media, fine, and performing arts, his two assistants, Jennifer and Vicky, the teachers involved, and to all the students who won awards, and there were many. And then again, congratulations to Tom Lehman, the director of athletics and health, and the coaches for two outstanding programs, excuse me, the all-county athletics induction ceremony and the varsity athletic award ceremony. To see, again, the number of students inducted to the all-county and the number of students receiving varsity athletic awards was breathtaking. The auditorium was packed with students receiving awards and, and with their friends and parents, it was a great job, and it was wonderful to see those students get their awards. And to you, Dennis, to the high school students, and I won't mention your, I can't say your last name, I didn't have the practice that Mike D'Ambrosio had, but I want to wish you the very, very best. It's been a pleasure having you on the Board of Ed or being a part of us. I want to wish you the very best in your future endeavors, and it is a pleasure to have you aboard, and I have a feeling you will be back. And to one and all, I want to wish you all a very healthy and happy, happy summer. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Transom, he was given an honorary life membership into the, I believe it's the PTA Council. Congratulations, Mr. Transom, well deserved. That is all I have, Mr. D'Ambrosio, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Maraska. Let's go down the list there. Mr. Transom, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I take it served by everybody.
All right. Mrs. Lucy?
Nope, just wishing everyone a happy summer.
Mrs. Scholl? Happy summer. I got just one quick thing, Dennis, that, I just noticed that on my keyboard is how I say your name. So I don't need this anymore, so we can just do it, because I'm never going to say your name again. Even if you, even if you come back from George Washington, you're not allowed in the board meeting, so that's it. And you might be on a Jeopardy question, you know, who's the first student rep in Oceanside in 125 years? Not that we'll be watching.
Let's hope you're not going to get that question.
Exactly.
Because you would never say the last name correctly.
Next is our public comment on non-agenda items. I'll go quick on this, this is the opportunity for anyone who wants to make a comment on any item that is not tonight's agenda. As I previously mentioned, state law does not require us to hold public comment period, but this Board of Education does so because we believe it's important to provide this forum to hear from community members about concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. Comments should be directed towards the chair, which is me. While everyone is acknowledged, encouraged to share their comments, please remember that this is not designed to be a question and answer session. If someone has a question that can be quickly answered, we'll do so. Otherwise, your proper personnel will file up on issue. Lastly, remember that the board cannot and will not discuss any personnel matters related to staff or students in public. Upon hearing that, Ms. Cindy Rosen, Cyberman Rosen, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say what an amazing last Board of Ed meeting it has been between the retirees and the honorees and everything like that. Dr. Harrington, as far as the cell phone policies with the upperclassmen, like you mentioned, and Dr. Mitchell mentioned, with the 11th and 12th graders, especially with the open campus, if they are driving to school and stuff like that, is it possible that they can leave their cell phones in their car? I know that prior years, they, you know, had not, no lockers at all, and with the amount of students that are in the high school, how is it going to work as far as all the kids, you know, from ninth grade all the way to 12th grade, getting to the lockers and stuff like that if you're implementing it back for next year?
So I hadn't thought about the concept of keeping it in their cars, but I don't see that as an issue. The issue is they cannot bring it on school grounds.
Okay.
So I mean, I guess you could say if they're parking it, but we wouldn't split hairs on that one, if they want to keep it in their car. I can't imagine that there would be many students who want to do that, but I don't see a problem with that. I would, I would confer with Dr. Mitchell, but I really don't. As far as the, you know, it's, there's going to be some relearning about what it's like to go to a locker and make sure you leave enough time. I mean, we understand that those will be some of the glitches initially, but our kids are smart, they'll figure it out.
Okay. And I just wanted to say thank you for an amazing school year. You guys have worked very hard with implementing everything that, you know, the state brings down and the law situation. I just wanted to say thank you.